Good evening everyone, we want to thank you for joining us tonight. Those of you that are in person and those of you on the web, we thank you. Tonight is, today is Tuesday October 19th. It is now 6:03. May we get a roll call Mr. Hill?
Mr. Bloomberg?
Here.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Here.
Mrs. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mrs. Rehn?
Here.
I apologize, I did not say this is a regular meeting of the Southeast Atlantic Board of Education. That is what we are starting today. Those of you that are here, may you stand with us and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Flag is that way. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you for that. Do we have a need for executive session? As I look at the agenda, I think we do before we start.
Yes, we do. The President to go into the executive sessions for, I believe, matters of negotiations.
Negotiations? Okay. First I'll just kind of explain what is happening here. So, we have some matters regarding negotiations that we need to go into an executive session for. Legislation allows us to go into an executive session because there are things that we cannot discuss of a public nature at this present time. So those of you that are joining us, I'm going to ask that you please don't leave us. We will be right back shortly. It will not take long, I'm assuming maybe 10-15 minutes at the most.
Correct.
May we get a motion to go into executive session? Someone? Who we got? Ms. Lee and Mr. Bloomberg. It is now 6:04. And we're going to head over to the cubicle here. Those of you that are online, we will continue to allow it to stream. You will just see us when we come back in. Those of you that are waiting, just sit tight for us please, and we will be back.
All in favor?
Aye.
...motion to reconvene to all the session.
Second.
Ms. Lee and Mr. Bloomberg again. All right, we will go back to our original. All right, we can go right into our liaison reports. Do we have a legislative report, Mr. Bloomberg?
We do. I am going to keep it incredibly short. I continue to be baffled by the legislation that has been produced by our state legislatures. But I'll keep that to myself. There's a variety of different recently introduced legislation, of which a variety of them are COVID-related. And one of them is legislation of House Code 425, introduced by Wayne County Rep and Madison County Rep or township, to prohibit a school from requiring a COVID-19 vaccine or any other genetic vaccine technology, prohibit a school from requiring an individual to wear a facial covering, and prohibit schools from requiring COVID-19 testing. So I'm just going to leave it at that. Let's see. Here's one that actually is useful. If you were to know that the first one was by one party, and this one is by the Democratic Party, is to require the placement of automatic external defibrillators in each public and charred non-public school, and require a school board to adopt an emergency action plan and develop a procedure for individuals to report violations. And I think that is very helpful and beneficial to all that work or enter our schools. So kudos to someone who's using their head. Then there is another one, to include a laptop, netbook, or tablet computer from sales tax if purchased during the sales tax holiday, and increase the labor price for school supplies and school instructional materials. Because apparently during that tax-free holiday, things like computers are not included, as well as there are limits in the total value and amount as it relates to school supplies. So kudos to someone on the other side of the aisle thinking about their constituents and people that this could be a benefit to them. And the rest of them are just kind of like useless Senate bills or House bills that no one really wants to hear about. So that's my whole report.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomberg.
Thank you, Mr. Bloomberg. Do we have a student achievement liaison report, Ms. Walkenberg?
We do. I had about 14 that I haven't been able to share for the last couple of months. I've pared it down to two. The first one is focusing on science, to go along with what we just heard. This was from a school in, actually several schools, but one that was in New Jersey. They found that a 2018 National Survey of Science and Mathematics Education found that students in grades K-3 were taught science for an average of just 18 minutes a day. I'm an English person, so even that, I'm even astounded at that. That's compared with 89 minutes for English language arts and 57 minutes for math. So, you know, many children go whole days or even weeks without science instruction. And we know, especially now, how important science, understanding science is. It deals with facts. So this study was trying to encourage, especially in those elementary classes, you know, K-3, to create time for science and to make it fun and use everyday experiments, you know, things that we use in our lives to show problem solving and build knowledge. And this is an age we know that kids are more, most curious when they're very young. So noting this, they found that the grades, the levels of understanding grew astronomically. And children were actually excited about studying science, which I can speak for my experience was not the case for me. So I thought that was great to hear. And then this one I was very excited about. This comes from Boston. Some eighth graders in a, this was not, this was Methuen, not Salem, but eighth grade students were encouraged to do some sleuthing at the North Andover Middle School under the care of the civics teacher. They actually went into the ancient texts and reports of the Salem witchcraft trials. And they had to try to prove that one of these women who was not, there were 20 people who were killed, most by hanging, but one woman, she was not killed, but she was never found not guilty. So they were supposed to look for information to try to prove her not guilty. So they got very involved in this. They were excited. They had a clear vision. And for those of us who've taught research, which is usually not very exciting, this just, I just thought this was fabulous, to have students see something that they can have an impact on. And actually, she was found not guilty officially. And in, there was a bill that was passed by the state senate binding her innocent. So I thought that was really exciting. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Walkenberg, for that report. We'll go right into, item 2.2, superintendent's report.
Good evening, everybody. I'll just make a few announcements here for the sake of time. Next month, or maybe by December, I think, you know, our plan, which is your reopening, recovery and revitalization of our schools plan is in full swing. I think by mid-year of December at the board work session, we'd love to do a big presentation on what we're working on. There's just so many things that we're working on. Ms. Thompson and I are participating in a national conference virtually. It would be nice to go to Boston, but virtually for career connections and SCL teachers. There's just so many, so much great stuff there, so we are ready to have a report on that. I do want to, for those that are listening, the big question is, you know, the first quarter has ended and we, you know, kind of tiptoed through our opening with regards to not really having full-blown clubs and other type of after-school activities. I'm really proud of our staff and our students because we've gotten through the first quarter with really, how should I say, really people following the protocols and, you know, minimizing the number of students and our staff that have to be quarantined and really being able to keep our doors open five days a week. So the supplementals that we did the first quarter were pretty much related to, directly related to some of the, like National Honor Society and things like that. Now I think we're ready to maybe expand that a little bit to other clubs at other grade levels. But we still caution that, you know, if we do all these good safe protocols during the day, we cannot throw those protocols out the window for some after-school activities. We understand that our children need it, and so we are doing another gradual release of this the second semester. We are very, going to be very, there's visitors and there's strategic partners. We are also going to use a critical eye with some of our strategic partners, which are folks that we partner to come in the building to do presentations and different connections. So with the help of my team over there, you know, my assistants, Sue, Doc Cabel and Melissa Thompson, we're going to be, you know, submitting some of those people that would like to come in and do some of those presentations. But, and again, field trips, that's another question. My answer to that is not all field trips are created equal. What I mean is, again, we want to protect our children and our staff. So we are definitely going to be reviewing field trips on a case-by-case basis, and I think some will be completely appropriate. And maybe the place that they're going to is institute some really good protocols. And so just want to announce to everybody that we are doing our next phase two gradual release of getting some of these things back and opportunities for our children. And that completes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. We will go into item 2.3, public comment. I do have one public comment. I believe Ms. Jones is here. Is it Thelma Jones? You have your form here? Want me to read it or should I? I'll just do it. So typically, we will be in our other conference room. We will have a mic where you can come forward. But I'll just go ahead and read it. That's what I'm here. So I'll just tell you the procedural process. So when you do the public comment, if you were standing, you would give your name, you would give your address, and then you would state your comment. Typically, the public participation piece is not really a dialogue, but sometimes we have always been accustomed to trying to answer the question for you if we can. But if there's something that really can't be answered here or it starts to create the dialogue, we will make certain that the board or the superintendent's office will get back to it. So I'll just lay it in there. So our public comment tonight is from Thelma Jones, 3894 South Berry Road here in South Euclid. The question is, how will the board address the fight culture at Greenview Middle School? Why are there no yearbooks? And how will you plan to engage parent participation involving students fighting? Is that correct? Actually, yes. Thank you. So I'll take the easiest one first. Does anybody, you're asking for yearbooks at Greenview?
I can answer that one.
Are there none? You're talking this year?
I can answer that one.
I don't know. She's got the Greenview kid number, so let me see what she has.
Yearbooks at Greenview, the yearbook actually was going to be done by the PTA previously for years. It was done by PTA. Unfortunately, crystal, serial sales decline. We would have yearbooks for a month after the date, the pickup date. People were not going to pick the yearbooks up. So it became more of an expenditure out of the PTA's budget, more so because people were not purchasing them and they were no longer picking them up either. So that is, I think, like two years ago, I think, was the last time that we did a yearbook and that was the reason why. Because it was becoming more costly and it was beneficial to them.
Then the question about how will the board address the fight culture here at, there at Greenview Middle School? I will allow Dr. Reed to answer that question, but just before she does start, the board, I guess I'll just want to be kind of transparent. The board really would not immediately address that situation. It will be something that will be handled on the building level. So I want to kind of let Dr. Reed explain a lot of the processes that are in place when these type of situations occur. And I just want to say that I'm not sure if a lot of people are aware, but the numbers of the kids back in school have almost doubled since the numbers last year of them not being there. And I just, I think I talked to a parent the other day, and I just want to say, like, the kids, and I'm not making excuses for their behavior, but the kids are cooped up. The same cooped-up kids that are at home causing some grief with parents and not listening are the same kids that are coming out to the building. So we are aware that we have some little bouncing beings in here. So I will let Dr. Reed answer because there is a specific process on how we handle a situation like that. There's going to be.
Well, thank you. Good evening. A few things. First of all, there is, there is an issue at the building level in this case of the concern of fighting at Greenview. There's a couple of things that I always recommend. Let me just speak generally, then I will specifically, is it Ms. Jones?
Yes.
To make sure. Usually, we encourage that, that relationship with the parent and at the building level principal administration. And that is something that we would encourage to happen if that satisfaction has not taken place or things are not resolved to the satisfaction, not just of the parents, but our, to our expectations as, as a district leadership. We work with the building administration to clear those things up. I also encourage that I am accessible to parents. And so what I would encourage some parents is you can either directly reach out to my office. And people might be wondering, who are those people sitting over there? They're actually central office administrators. And using my assistants, who's maybe Ms. Thompson, if you could raise your hand, and then Mr. Cabel, assistants who. Those, you know, the elements are important too, but I'm really talking about when it comes to your specific issue. You know, I'd be working with Ms. Thompson on this with regards to things like that. One of the things that I think Ms. President Jones referred to is, and again, not ever making excuses, we're seeing even around, not just in SCL, but when I speak with other superintendents, that age group right now is having a difficult time building, I don't know, reacquainting themselves. I'm trying to speak respectfully here. Reacquainting themselves with going back to school five days a week and now having some parameters. And maybe even the, you know, you've got to remember, there are some students that were, been out of school since, say, March of 2020, and for some reason, they didn't come back to school last year in person and did it remotely for a year. So you're now, you're talking 18 months. And so I would say September is, what at Greenview was definitely not a norm, nor is it ever what would be something we want to be or acceptable, so we acknowledge that. I think there's a few things with regards to if you've not been at Greenview, the bigness. And so we've actually are looking at processes that are taking place there. And it seems to me when we look at the data, a lot of it is recess, transitional time, and some of that, not necessarily in the classroom. And so those are some of the things. So to answer your question, we look at some of those, you know, processes. One of the big things that was an issue, not just for us, is getting people to come back to work. So for example, Greenview, we have slotted, you could have 10 new nades can do that. We actually could only find four people that were wanting to take that position. So that leaves a lot of holes, not unsupervised, I mean, our principals are in there doing that. We're now working to see whether we have actually some teachers that are willing to give up, you know, half their lunch to be able to supervise that. So we're really through the month of September, working through some bugs, just really a shortage of personnel. Again, not just here, everywhere. So, you know, those are some of the things, you know, again, speaking generally, but even more specifically, you kind of, you know, have some faces here, you know, want to follow up. But there have been, I think Mr. Cabel spent a couple of days there looking at those times. We actually have took some notes. I have a standing status meeting with the administration. So this way, we want to see how the progress of some of the changes that we have made go in there. So just a little checks and balance between building level and district level and how we try to support that work.
And I do want to add, it's, it's easy to sit back and hear the process be stewed up. But when it's your child that is in the middle of a situation like that, at that point by right, all you want to focus on is how is my child going to not have to experience this? So a lot of times, you don't see, you don't see that process in the background playing out where when that situation occurs, there is a protocol where they will go in and kind of evaluate how many times a day have this happening? What periods of the day is it happening? Is it isolated, maybe before lunch, after lunch? Is it when they're antsy? And then trying to break down to what group of kids it is. And maybe even, I don't know how far, Mr. Cabel, you've gotten in this situation, but there even is a portion to where the child or children that are in the situation are there. Are they kids that have been in school? Are they kids that have been in school? Are they kids that have grown up in the Greenview environment? Are they kids that have just come in and been transplanted? Because every single one of those situations might require something different. So it is a lot more, and I want people to understand, it's a lot more. is a lot more, and I want people to understand, it's a lot more than just taking kids to the office and suspending them, because you did not rectify the problem. We just removed them from the situation. And then nine times out of 10, they come back in, and they're even more hotter than they are because they were put out of school. So I just say that. And I always say, if you have an issue in that building, get right in there and talk to that principal, and see if they can give you some assistance. And if you do not feel like they're giving that assistance, you can always help make that up, that up.
Can I say one last thing real quick, and then we can, what I will also say to the parents, like Ms. Jones said, before we do any of this, from a board member, I'm a mom of three kids that are in this district. One, my youngest, being at Greenview as well. So one thing I would like to bring to everyone's members, and I was talking to a parent that called me last week, is a lot of our programming and additional programming and support that we have within our schools, and this is for every school district, not even just our school district, it's a universal thing. I have a lot of my friends are educators. That additional program and those extra volunteers due to COVID have not gone back into the buildings yet to offer those extra assistance that we do need. I know that is something that currently Ms. Thompson and our People Services Department is working on getting those programs back into the school building where they were kind of growth. They, a lot of the, a lot of the stuff we talked about, this little girl at the school, they had groups of little girls, and they would get together, they would talk, and they would start conflict, and then would become best friends, you know? And that's exactly how my daughter got her best friend now, because of a conflict that was able to be resolved, because of the groups that we were able to bring and the programming that we were able to bring within the schools. So I don't want any parents to feel like, well, heck, there's nothing that you can do now. We had a program, we had a function, and we had a system that actually was working, and we felt was very beneficial, and other school districts are looking and using this as a model so they can bring those programs into their school. So there is something. It's not always going to be this way. It has not been this way. And I want to assure everyone of that, because that's how people come and need one. This, you all knew this was going to be a problem. No, we didn't. No one had a clue how it will be going back into these school buildings. So it really is a work in progress. And I don't want you to think that, you know, you're out there on an island by yourself, or, you know, just to heck with whatever. I don't, I didn't get a direct answer. But there is one, there is help, there will be change, like Dr. Reed just said, when they do their, our presentation, so how we can figure out how to open up the school, to offer the benefits that we've offered before. But those things are coming back. So I do want to guarantee you and assure you of that, that there will be change. And trust me, it is coming soon. Okay?
Thank you very much. Do we have any more public comments that have come through?
The call has received.
Item three, minutes of the meeting of October 19th. The meeting of the regular minutes of September 21st, 2021, will be approved as recorded or corrected. Furthermore, the reading of these minutes will be waived. May we get a motion to approve item 3.1? Ms. Falkenberg and Ms. Lee. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mr. Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Ryan?
Aye.
Treasurer's report, item four.
Good evening. I just want to say, before I get into my items, I will have the five-year forecast update for you guys in the November meeting. It's pretty much done. I'm going to tweak it based on how the October numbers come in, and then I will present it.
Yeah, I can't wait to read.
Hold your excitement. Item 4.1, recommend for approval of financial reports for month-end September 2021. Item 4.2, bank reconciliation for month-end September 2021. Item 4.3, the investment earnings for month-end September 2021. Item 4.4, this is an adjustment to the annual permanent appropriations to the general fund. You'll see this next month within the forecast. So the new approved funding formula actually carves out the section of money that goes to charter schools. So we don't see that money come in, and we don't see it come out. I'd like to say it has a net effect. It really doesn't. But it's going to look shocking because it's not going to look like last year's. I mean, you're going to see about a $3 million, $3.2 million swing in revenue, and about a $2.7 million swing in expenditures because we don't see the money, so it can't come in, can't come out. So this is adjusting it for this year prior to getting into the forecast. And then item 4.5, the then-and-not purchase orders as of October 14th. Then item 4.6, recommend for approval, item 4.1 through 4.5.
Upon the recommendation of the treasurer, can we get a motion to approve items 4.1 through 4.5?
So moved.
Mr. Bloomberg, Ms. Falkenberg. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mr. Bloomberg?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Ryan?
Aye.
Going into item five, superintendent's item.
Good evening. Again, under 5.1, recommending to the Board of Education to approve the last best offer to our OC 207. For those of you not familiar with OC 207, that includes the district's secretaries, instructional aides, let's see, monitors, and, I think I, and security guards. So we have, we have two different OC groups, so I'll make sure I get those clear. So under 5.1, recommending that approval of our last best offer to OC 207.
Upon recommendation of the superintendent, may we get a motion to approve item 5.1?
So moved.
Go ahead, Captain.
Second.
Ms. Ryan and Ms. Falkenberg. Any questions or comments? Thank you for your hard work. It is not easy to finalize some of these things and get them solidified so we can move on.
We appreciate that.
Hearing no other questions or comments, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Moving on to 6.0, certified personnel. 6.1, recommending to the Board of Education to approve the following personnel items. And you can see there's a variety here. We do have some teachers that will be retiring at the end of the school year. And hopefully, as we get towards the end of the school year, we can do a recognition for that. So there's some longtime teachers here, some really great folks. And these teachers are over at, at Greenview. Also resignation, and we'll cease a paid leave of absence, unpaid leave of absence. Under here, this is some of our mentors through the resident educator program. And then if we have any fatiguing services for approval for that.
May we get a motion to approve item 6.1, certified personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Ryan?
Yes.
Any questions or comments? Thank you for the service that you all have given. For those of you that have qualifications for retirement, congratulations.
It looks like we might have to hire, you're all from fifth grade, if you don't agree.
Especially that Ms. Newhouse, like, science is never the same after you leave her. It is, it is not. My son is in the seventh grade, and was just telling a friend the other day, my best science year was in fifth grade, so.
Always some knee critters when you go in there.
Hearing no further questions or comments, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Bloomberg?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Moving on to our classified staff, 7.0. Under 7.1, recommend to the Board of Education to approve the following personnel items for our classified staff. This would be our non-teaching staff. You can see we have some of the fomens. And again, just want to bring to, thank you, bring to our attention, we do have, again, in December, we'll have two of our longstanding head custodians retiring, one at Brush here and the other one at Greenview. So again, you know, want to thank them for all their service, but it's still a few months away, hopefully, we'll just take some time to recognize that the closer we get to that. And again, a few other paid leaves of absences. Looks like we got some substitutes here. And that completes 7.1.
May we get a motion to approve item 7.1?
So moved.
Second.
Lee, Ms. Falkenberg. Any questions or comments?
We'll miss you, John. Seriously, he's been around forever.
Any further? May we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Mrs. Ryan?
Aye.
And moving on to 8.0, supplemental contracts. 8.1, recommend to the Board of Education to approve the following supplemental contracts, which you're going to see mostly here. We do have some for instructional music, but this would include a lot of our winter sports that are coming up here. And as I mentioned earlier in our, my report, some of the clubs that will come back, and some of the other things will be included under supplemental. So we hope to see a few of that in the near future.
May we get a motion to approve item 8.1?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Falkenberg, Ms. Ryan. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, I had a question. The drama club advisor, does she just work during, on those, the ball play and the musical? Mr. Miller?
This is more of a club. I don't even know that they actually put on a performance. The musical, the spring musical and the ball, those are two separate supplements.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Ryan?
Aye.
Mr. Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Under 9.0, business items. Again, most of our contracts that we have, not most, if not all, we've kind of condensed them under business. So they used to be a little bit in different places. It just was a lot easier to make sure that they were here. So we have a facilities agreement. I believe the first one under 9.1 is probably with the Cleveland Ice, which is for the ice rink. 9.2 is for the pool for our swim team. And then 9.3, recommending approval of items 9.1 and 9.2.
May we get a motion to approve items 9.1 through 9.2?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bloomberg, Ms. Ryan. Any questions or comments? Did you go have a new pool with their new building?
No.
Oh, they don't?
No?
They actually closed one.
They actually closed one because they had two, so they just have that one now. Sorry.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mr. Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Under 10.0, which is the academics, technology innovation, just want to bring your attention. You're going to see each one of these items, say PSI, PSI. Each one of these actually is an agreement for our non-publics. And you might wonder why they're on here. It's because we are the fiscal agent for your auxiliary funds and title funds, and some of those things are very titled to under the law. So 10.1, you're going to see an agreement for a Title I teacher for Corpus Christi. 10.2, this one is for St. Francis of Assisi. And then 10.3 is Agatha. And then 10.4 is approval of the items 10.1 through 10.3.
May we get a motion to approve items 10.1 through 10.3?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bloomberg, Ms. Falkenberg. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mr. Bloomberg?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
Mrs. Ryan?
Aye.
Under 11.0, we have student services and strategic partnerships. Again, you go ahead to see PSI. The first one, 11.1, actually is an agreement for Corpus Christi. And you can see for the different services, how they, this is how they're going to use your auxiliary service funds. And then 11.2 is approval of these student services and strategic partnership items.
May we get a motion to approve items 11.1 and 11.2?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Ryan and Ms. Falkenberg. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, may we get a roll call, Mr. Hill?
Mrs. Ryan?
Aye.
Ms. Falkenberg?
Aye.
Mr. Bloomberg?
Aye.
Mrs. Jones?
Aye.
Ms. Lee?
Aye.
There are no exceptional students education intervention items this evening. But before we move on, the only thing I wanted to say, though the board policy is not my section, the only thing I wanted to tell you, when you look at the board policy, you might see, it looks like redundancy of weapons, weapons, and weapons. Really, what it is, is really taking a very similar policy that is tailored to, if it's in the 1,000s, it usually is for, like, administration. I think if it's in the 3,000s, it's meant for what they call professional staff, which is really our certified staff. And I think if it's in the 4,000s, it's for classified. So much of the language is the same, but they actually tailor it. And it's really, the number is based on, again, if I remember my policies right, the 1,000s for anybody that pertains to administration there. So again, if you see that repetitiveness, it's not that we put it in twice, it's actually meant for different types of classification and personnel in our district. And that concludes my section.
Perfect. Thank you. Item 13, Board of Education information. A few things here. So just, I guess we'll take notes, because that notification should be coming out soon, but it is my understanding that, I don't think we had Capitol Conference dates when we established our 2021 calendar for meetings. So we are going to be vacating the November of, November 9th work session, and we're just going to have the regular meeting on November 16th established. We will be in Capitol, we will be coming back from Capitol Conference on?
That Tuesday.
Tuesday. So we will not have a board meeting that evening. If we need, if we have a need for executive session, we can gun ourselves accordingly. And then, we had council meeting already this month, right? You want to talk to me about that?
I did go, I did go to Lynn Hurst Council meeting. It was nice to go. Mr. Ward did have a couple of suggestions in regards to the Sunview parking lot, and, you know, so I did listen to those and forwarded them to the correct individual and department if they should have access.
What about?
I forgot to go to South Euclid, but I just realized. I will briefly talk to you.
If you have notes, if you have notes, can you get them to South Euclid, and then you can kind of send them? Do you want them, that way you don't have to?
Sure, thank you.
Whatever, I'll go and apologize.
It's no problem. I started to call you until it's hilarious. I started to call you, because they all go to South Euclid.
And then, does anybody else have any board information? I know we got after prom fundraisers coming up, because my email is loaded.
I know. There's two after-prom fundraisers going on right now. Today is the last day to order taco kits at Mo's. You have till 9 o'clock tonight.
Oh, shoot.
And then the other big one is our 30 Days of Giving. So there's 30 opportunities to win prizes in the month of November. They go in value from $25 to $250 plus. It's a trip for four on, like, gearing to go fishing. And it's $10 for 10 tickets, which means you have 10 opportunities to win every day. And then it's $25 for 30 tickets, so you've got 30 opportunities to win every day. So that is on the main page of the website. So hopefully, we can reach our goal. We're trying to, we're trying to raise, like, $2,000 because we don't know if we're going to be able to do the fashion show. And not because of COVID, believe it or not, we can't find anybody to donate tuxes.
And American Commodores, that teed up clothes.
Yeah. And that, the one in South Euclid was, the one in Lynn Hurst, they moved to Lynn Hurst since that was over, it's not open because of staffing. The one in Metro apparently doesn't have tuxes. And the one in Solon, I think, told us we could have three.
So did we?
And Metro has said no. So.
Really? So, did you, do you think about, what about trying K&amp;G, and maybe even if it's not a tuxedo?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's a, thank goodness for dialogue, it's like falling all over the place.
The kids are wearing suits and stuff, though.
Well, and for dresses, the girls are going to have to go to Strongsville, because that's the only place we could find.
I just found my prime dress, believe it or not.
So yeah, so if anybody else, if we, ethos, environment knows, anybody who has suits or tuxes that can help us out, that would be great, because that was one of our major fundraisers. So if we can't have that, we're going to have to really start scrambling, if you think so. Hopefully, like, this November one will go off a little bit better. I mean, we raised almost $1,000 already, so very proud and happy about that. So if we can hit our $2,000 mark, and for some reason, if we can't do the fashion show, then at least it will help us a little bit that way.
So people who, because I- So um, people who, because I've done it, you know, so people who donate to the after prom, the prom fashion show, and it doesn't go forward, is that money just gonna roll over to after prom?
Yeah, we'll have to figure out what we're gonna do.
Okay.
What we have to do is because they, we'll promote them as sponsors, but if they want their money back, we'll obviously give them their money back.
Perfect, because I was getting ready to make my donation.
Yeah, but we had other, I mean, we've, we've talked about doing like just after prom fashion, so the kids could just wear their own stuff, so.
True.
We just may have to make some changes. But if anyone knows tuxes, there's Paul, because we can talk, we need to talk.
Um, tomorrow, October twentieth, it's my understanding that the P T A Council, in collaboration with the Legal Women Voters, is doing a candidate night.
Yep, here.
And meet and greet here at the P A C. So that's gonna be a little different because it is usually in the cafeteria.
Yeah.
So candidates on stage or coming up to a podium? So we'll see, so if anybody wants to go out and, hopefully, you can meet everybody that is on the two city slates. I believe the meet and greet starts at six and then they roll right into the um, question and answer portion.
And I believe it's supposed to be, um, you're supposed to be able to watch it as well. Christine had posted something, so I will double check that, and if that's the case, we will put it on the website.
Okay, perfect for that. Um, I don't think I have any more dates in here besides election day.
Oh, yes, the last night, yes, they play Luther Night some Friday.
This Friday?
Yep.
It'll be senior night.
And it's senior night as well, and the blood drive, yes.
Oh, yeah, the blood drive, it's probably after, they're on its side.
And then um, the culmination of all events this year, November second, election night for.
We got three.
So congratulations, good luck and congratulations to whoever is out leading the campaign, trying to reclaim or obtain.
All right, one more point of confirmation, three numbers. Um, Greenview's also having a fundraiser late tomorrow with Jets. That's right, because I gotta be Jets and Mo's.
I wear Jets.
I got it on my calendar, so Jets from five to nine is uh, Greenview fundraiser.
Jets pizza.
I thought you said Jacks, I'm like, that's, Jets, like Jets, okay. So go get your dinner, yeah, aunts and dads don't have to cook, just go get it and support the kids.
Great, lots of opportunities.
Any other public comment, Mr. Hill?
No.
Hearing none, may we get a motion to adjourn? It is now seven.
The first reads, the new policy.
So, these usually are before, all right, I'll take it for what it's worth. This is section thirteen point three, board policy first reading. South Uga Lynn Hurst Board of Education presents the following board policies for first read and preliminary review. Superintendent presents the following policies to be read at first read. We are asked to vote and adopt these policies at the board meeting being held on November sixteenth. Policy number zero one six nine point one, which is a revision of the participation at board meetings. Policy number fifteen thirty is a revision, evaluation of principals and other administrators. Policy sixteen seventeen is a new policy regarding weapons. Twenty two seventy one is a revision of college credit plus. Twenty three seventy point oh one is a revision for blended learning. Thirty two seventeen is a revision for weapons. Forty two seventeen, a revision for weapons. Fifty four sixty four, revision for early high school graduation. Fifty two seventy seven is a replacement for school-sponsored publications and productions. Sixty one fourteen is revised cost principles regarding spending federal funds. Seventy one hundred, revised disposition of real property and personal properties. Seventy four fifty, revised property inventory. Eighty seven fifty, revised on bonding.
Eighty seven forty.
Eighty, what did I say?
Eighty seven fifty.
All right, I'm just like, eighty seven forty, thank you, Mr. Bloomberg. And I got glasses on. So those, if you all have any questions about them, we can read those and get those answered before we go into adoption.
Okay, so if you wanna uh, make notes. And also, anyone who's interested in reading through all the policies, they are available on the district website, you can just go to Board of Education, um, Board Docs, and then you can log into the state agenda and you can have access to all of them.
Thank you. Mrs. Ryan? And there is no further need for executive session? None? Back to my regular, no further public comment? And it is now seven or eight, may we get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Hearing no questions, all in favor?
Aye.